All right, it's 10:00 AM and I'd like to call this February 26, 2021, meeting of the Harris County Commissioners Court to Order. Commissioner Cagle.
Good morning, Your Honor. We are very privileged today to have Dr. Max A. Miller, Jr., who is the pastor for the last baker's dozen of years at Mount Hebron Missionary Baptist Church there in Precinct One, to do our opening prayer. Dr. Max graduated, he's homegrown, he graduated from Milby High School, which when I was a youngster, I was at a different school, but we used to debate Milby on a regular basis and have a little rivalry with them. I'm a touch older than Dr. Max, though. He's gotten two bachelor's degrees, a master's in theology, two doctorates in religious education and divinity from Sacramento Theological and North Bay Theological Seminary. He's an active civic leader, serving on several neighborhood civic clubs, along with being a commissioner for the City of Houston Housing Authority. He is the president of the Baptist Ministers Association of Houston and Vicinity, and I love that vicinity part of that because he works with both incorporated and unincorporated region of our county. He is the general secretary of the National Missionary Baptist Convention of America, and he is married to his wife Rhonda, he has a son and two daughters. And, Your Honor, I'm pleased that he is also doing our invocation on this, the last of our Commissioners Court sessions in Black History Month. And so, we've got a couple of resolutions that are going to come up as to Black History Month that we'll be picking them up on Monday, which will be in March, so we might be just a slight skew off. But I want to give a shout out to those resolutions. And, Dr. Max, please lead us in our invocation at this time, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners, to the rest of the Commissioners, our Judge, thank God for the opportunity. Lord, how we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. We call on you because you are our God. And then, Master, we call on you again because we're your children. But mostly, we call on you because you are our Father. We realize and we recognize that in a time like this, if we ever needed you before, we sure do need you now. You have been a God of our salimies. You've been a God all by yourself when we needed you the most. So, Lord, we thank you right now for all you've done, that we're able to listen to one another, that we're still alive and on this side of the ground. Well, Master, I ask you today that you bless, lead and guide our county judge, that you lead and guide our Commissioners, that you protect them and their families and everything that they touch, everything that they desire. And, Master, they call on you first. Touch all of the constituents in these areas, areas and the districts. And, Lord, touch the prayer, because I stand in need of prayer as well. Guide this meeting and make it be what you would have it to be. Have us to listen to your leadership, and that we'll follow, because we realize the steps of a good man are ordered by you, Lord. So, take our leadership and place them in the realm of spirituality. And we all know that it's not about us, but it's all about you. We ask these prayers while we thank you for your manifold blessings. Even the blessings of making through this blizzard tree that we had on last week. We ask it all in the watchful, wondrous, wonderful name of Jesus and for his sake. Amen.
Amen, Pastor. Thank you very much.
Dr. Miller, Rhonda Ellis. Good to talk to you early this weekend. You do a lot of work all around the county, but we all know your basis in Sunnyside. I just thank you for doing all you're doing to help folks right there around the corner from your church.
Dr. Miller, Tom Ramsey here. Thank you for your continued leadership. It's good to hear from you again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Doc, this is Cagle. Thanks for that remembrance of, I know it's a song, I know it's a verse, but "The steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord, and he delighteth in his way; though he fall, though he fall, he shall not be utterly cast down." And with the icepocalypse that we are dealing with today, that's a good word for us, that we might fall, but we're not going to be cast down, we're going to pick up, we're going to rise, we're going to overcome. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Judge.
Y'all, it's, as you know, President Biden and Governor Abbott are visiting Harris County today. And so, our members of our congressional delegation are going to be here. It's crazy times. We had to move the meeting once because our staff didn't have the right internet and just the means to be able to submit the items, and then the buildings were not accessible. And then, you know, we have the ability to host the President of the United States, hopefully make clear our regions, our counties' priorities today. So, for that reason, we are going to get through the items that are necessary to pass today. There's about nine or 10 of them. We've worked with the departments to identify the items that are urgent, to ensure that there's no lapse in county services or processes. And what I would ask is for us to recess at 10:30 so that I'm able to get to greet the President. I know that all of the members of court are also being included. The President has made it very clear he wants us to be a bipartisan conversation. And so, I believe I'll join you all later today at NRG is my understanding. But I know things are in flux and they've been in touch with your offices directly. And we have been in communication with our federal and our state partners, our leaders in our area to make sure we have asks ready for the President. Yes, Commissioner Cagle? And then Commissioner Ellis.
Oh, Judge, I was trying to interrupt your comments. I just wanted to, at the conclusion of your comments, say I've reviewed the items that are Item 1, 6, 50, 97, 98, 105, 119 and 174. The last item is the discussion of the storm. Based upon that truncated discussion that you have, I would, I don't personally need any discussion on these. And my understanding of the item for Commissioner Ellis is that that's something that he wants to do in his precinct, so I don't have a problem with that. And I would therefore move, unless Commissioner Ellis wanted to move that one item that was his, Items 1, the Items 1, 6, 50, 97, 98, 105, 119 and 174, so that we could move straight into discussion on the item that would require discussion.
A second, all of items, including mine.
Great. And I know we have two speakers on Item 326, so let's vote on the ones Commissioner Cagle listed, if that's all right?
Judge.
For the final one. Yes.
This is James. So, to get clarification on Item Number 6, what action is being requested? Is it, is the action regarding Precinct One's participation in support of an eviction?
Yes.
Prevention Legal Aid Drive-Thru?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Cagle on Items 1, 6, 50, 97, 98, 105, 119 and 174, and a second by Commissioner Ellis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving then to Item 326, that's the broad discussion on the winter storm. And we have two speakers. Cindy, will you call them up, please?
Yes, ma'am. Jacob Clementeck, Texas Right to Life. Go ahead, please.
Yes, this is Jacob Clementeck, and I have something to ask Tom Ramsey, Precing Commissioner 3, and that is, I want to know if he has relatives named Tom, I mean, what was it? I'm looking for Ramsey. Oh, here it is, Pauline and Mark Ramsey. And also to Commissioner Ellis, I said, he's number one, he's number one. During the Boris Bounzum, some redistricting conference, I said that because, hey, he's the Commissioner Precing One, so it just goes hand in hand that he's number one, he's number one. And he's a good politician also. At the end of it, I also have the final verbal abuse of Commissioner Jack Cagle by saying, he could have been more conservative in that thank you card to me that he promised he would send, because, well, it was, let me get it out, okay. It says, "Dear Jacob, comma, thank you sincerely," and then he signed it, and then the things then need to be done. He could have said, "Dear Jake," hey, that would have cut it down on print, printer, ink, and time to top up that note. And he could have said, "Thanks" instead of "thank you." And, well, he did an impediment, but, well, that would have saved ink also, that's county property. And so, hey, well, and he could have said "friends" instead of "sincerely," because "friends" is shorter than "sincerely," and it's kind of an acceptable way to close the letter. So, I think he could have been more conservative, Jack. And now, well, talking about. Okay, thank you very much, Jack. And you want to rise. God, Lord Almighty, help us to heaven. But of course, you know, I went to a liberal university, U of H, and I got a liberal degree in philosophy. So, hey, I'm the most liberal guy you can get. Oh, and although Commissioner Garcia, and como sea, yeah, a little Spanish, I know. At the end of it, well, are y'all still listening? I guess not. Although, at the end of it, hi to all of y'all, Lena and Garcia, Adrian Garcia and Ronnie Ellis and Tom Ramsey and Jack Cagle, the best for life, he's a Republican. And I would like to know whether or not Tom Ramsey has relatives.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right.
I love to talk to them.
Olivia Rivers, The Bridge.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to address the Commissioners Court. I'm not here to dictate what happens with the infrastructure in Harris County. I'm not an expert in electricity and utility services, but I am an advocate for our community's most vulnerable population, and that's survivors of domestic and sexual violence and child abuse. And today, I would just like to share the results and damages of what happened due to the unreliability of the system and how it impacted our nonprofit and our clients. As stated, my name is Olivia Rivers, and I serve as the CEO for The Bridge Over Troubled Waters. And our Destiny Village Child Care Center was damaged in last week's winter storm. It resulted in the bursting of pipes and flooding of the center that caused damage to 70% of our building. And I want to take the time to thank Commissioner Adrian Garcia for coming out and touring this week. But our center is not just a place that parents drop off their children every day. We lost more than just our building last week. We lost a safe haven for this community's vulnerable population. We lost a place where our youth get to learn and play and grow. And our families lost a place of security where their children are loved and fed and safe. And our space was just for our children, and it's no longer there, and our hearts are absolutely broken. We believe that every child deserves the best chance to thrive in this life, and that's what Destiny Village provided to over 60 children every day. And what's happened is we found ourselves in a unique predicament. We are battling the pandemic of domestic and sexual violence within a global health pandemic and now wrapped in a natural disaster. Survivors fleeing dangerous situations should not have to worry about if the shelter, which is the last place on earth they want to be, is going to be able to sustain power and running water. Our nonprofits should not have to wonder where we can relocate adults and children should the building become too cold to be habitable. When we lost power at our shelter, we also lost contents of our refrigerator. So, I ask you guys to imagine the devastation of losing enough food to feed 100 people a day. Our survivors deserve the best opportunity to thrive and move forward. And again, I'm not an energy expert, but I am an advocate for survivors of violence and vulnerable populations. Please help us ensure that those who have suffered so much already never have to worry about access to power, running water and sanitation. These are basic human rights that everyone deserves. Thank you, guys, so much for your time and all you do for our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia and then Commissioner Cagle.
Thank you, Judge. Olivia, it was a pleasure to see you the other day. I wish it was under better circumstances. I just simply want to say thank you for taking time out to speak today, but also thank you, more importantly, for all you do for victims of domestic abuse and for those babies. Thank you for making sure that the cycle of violence doesn't continue, because your work there with those children is so critical to the future of our community. So, thank you for all you do, and we're going to continue to fight for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Your Honor, Commissioner Garcia, thank you for allowing this entity to have this platform today. And Commissioner Garcia, thank you for going by there. Judge, before I had the privilege of moving into public service, I had the privilege of working with and representing a number of the women and mothers and indirectly then the children that were in the bridge. In those youthful days of mine, I was six foot four and quite fit, and so I was a popular candidate at times for those particularly nasty gentlemen that needed to have someone there that they knew that they could not push around. And this entity has been serving our communities for a long and blessed time. And so, Commissioner Garcia, if there's anything that you need from Precinct 4 to assist them getting back on their feet, let us know.
Thank you. Thank you for calling. Any other speakers, Cindy, on this item?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so let's move to the discussion then on Item 326. I believe Commissioner Garcia had a note on it. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge. Trying to get these buttons straight. On this particular item, I want to start the conversation by proposing a motion. And that motion would be to move to place one debris removal site in each precinct with a high utilization rate for MWBE contractors at a cost not to exceed $325,000 and allocate $100,000 to each precinct to conduct debris pickup by request.
Second.
Commissioner Ellis.
So, Commissioner, I do want to ask whether or not, under the motion, it's permissible for each Commissioner to pick it up or receive it, whether it's incorporated, unincorporated? I want to make sure that's at the discretion of the precinct.
Yeah, I think by virtue of the motion, that it be assigned to your precinct under our respective oversight, it should be utilized as you see fit.
Okay. And to make sure we can meet the MWBE goal, I want to make sure with purchasing, should that be a problem? I assume it's not. This ought to be one area where it'll be pretty easy to do it. But are we doing this on existing contracts? Any RFP issues? How does this work?
So, Commissioner, what we did was we pulled a current contract with our debris monitor and our debris disposal contractor. They're really just doing an oversight, and we actually went out and reached out to six small MWB firms to do the actual dumpster deliveries and the pickup of the actual products if need be. So, the majority of the work's going to go to the MWBEs. We've identified six of them off the city and state. They're all certified. And we're also going to look at other small businesses if we need to increase those quantities or numbers. But in this instance, it's probably the best bet for us to even possibly get reimbursed if we do actually get reimbursed down the road, because we're using our federally procured contract. The vendors have agreed to sub out to as many MWBs as we feel is necessary, and they've actually provided these to us. We verified all these firms that are currently certified.
And, Agent, Commissioner, do you think, under the law, do we need to plug in a number? Or, I mean, how do we make sure, I know the number was so low legally, can we do that? What gives you comfort level, Commissioner Garcia?
You know, obviously, I'm going to shoot for, to outperform whatever number we do set, but I will defer to Mr. Menefee and to see.
To make sure we don't run afoul of law, but the system did a disparity study. So, each precinct can figure that out, or would this come under submaster thing, Dwight?
I think we need to keep it under the current contract that we just, we use as many as we possibly. We can't set a quota for the discussion I had with.
I know that'd get us in trouble.
It gets us in trouble. So, if the vendor's already willing to utilize a large number of MWBs, they're doing more than the 30% we already have now. So, the amount of work, if we increase.
Under our 30% goal.
This is much more than our 30% goal, Commissioner. This work is even higher than that. The vendor offered that to us, so we're way above that fee, but it's been an option of them to provide that to us. We didn't dictate that. They came back and said.
It would never be a quota. Just make sure you run it by Mr. Menefee and Colette Hope, who I know advises us. But I would think this is the area, because our numbers and disparity study was so low that clearly this would be one where, down the road, we ought to figure out how one of these MWBEs goes through an RFP process, has opportunity, and they can probably be fine.
Exactly. And I did run this by Ms. Hope, just so you know. Pamela and I had a discussion with her a couple of times about this, and we provided her with the plan, and she said the plan looked reasonable. We just need to be careful that we don't expect it to be a certain level above the 30%, because we'd get in trouble. So, we haven't exceeded that.
Going forward, what I'm saying is, I know if you went through RFP process, the trash would have ended up discarded somewhere by then. But it ought to be an area where, I was glad to see, by the way, Houston contractors in support of MWBEs counting that MWBE status when they are a prime, as long as they are certified as MWBE. I don't know if the members got that letter or not, but I hope you get it, Dwight.
And just so you know, Commissioner, we're already looking at rebidding this thing, the debris contract, and several of them with the new process we're currently doing, that I also asked the question of, are you a prime or a sub? And then we identify those as well. We just did one for the flood control. So, I just want to give you that.
Last point, because I know we're on a schedule. I'll wait until Monday to bring it up, Commissioner. If there's something broad enough when we do it Monday, one reason why I want it incorporated as well as unincorporated is the muds opt not to pick up the heavy trash on people. I was talking to our former HR person, and he was telling me what a big problem it was for him. Okay, thank you.
I have visited with many of our unincorporated muds over the past couple, three days, Commissioner. And we're actually taking calls in Precinct 3. We've actually picked them up and documented. So, we hadn't had that many at this point, but this is one of those events I think it's going to spread out over time as people clean up and clean out. This is going to develop. So, thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for getting this on there. This gives us access. We're going to work through Dwight's office in terms of being sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is, but it's good to have options. I think we're probably going to need it. But since 75% of Precinct 3 is unincorporated, we're keeping our eye on that to be sure we don't have a bunch of folks out there hauling it to places they shouldn't.
Commissioner Cagle, sorry about that.
Yes, Judge, we've got some experience in the county in this process, and John can talk about this. He assisted us, his office did. After Harvey, we had our first self-help center, which we have in Precinct 4, and we were able to get that up and running last Saturday, actually last Friday, a week ago. And we've had a steady stream of up to 50, sometimes a little bit more, individuals who, because the amount of their debris was enough, they could load it in their pickup truck or haul it to the self-help center, and they could take care of it. It's just beautiful to see people. And also, times, many of our faith-based partners, our churches and other groups are utilizing our center. We had to get a little approval of TCEQ, who came out last Saturday, and I met them at our place so that everything was fine and appropriate with regard to that. But it also is a place where we can hand out water, both the bottled water as well as the toilet water, which you've got to bring your own container for that. So, our little self-help center, which can be part of what I think that Commissioner Garcia is envisioning here, has been very helpful to the question that Commissioner Ellis said. All we ask is that you be a county resident and that you don't be a contractor, because we don't want contractors to charge a citizen, a resident, money to haul it off and then put it into the quote-unquote "free county repository." Then they're ripping off that citizen, that resident, and that individual. And so, we don't allow it to be open for contractors, but for volunteer organizations, our churches and other groups that are helping others, we are open for business, and that business, we anticipate, will begin to rise as insurance companies have come out and approved the repairs in many of these places. And so, if any of my colleagues would like to see how that operates, John's group helped us get through the TCEQ group and all that other type of stuff. We have some institutional experience here, and we're also innovators and the best practices. We were the pilot, and the pilot works. And so, part of this is what should be spread out amongst our other precincts.
So, to clarify, Dwight, so this is existing contracts, is what you're saying is going to, to the extent that we can get reimbursed, would put us in a good position? And then, there's $100,000 for the gap that was there that Commissioner Garcia has filled?
So, the current contract is, the series is our debris monitoring, our debris removal contract, and they're going to sub out some of the work that we're seeing. Some of the lineups we're going to have to add into monitors of the site, but the debris monitor also is with Tetra Tech, and they're our current contractor, too. So, we're going to do our best to document everything to try to get all our money back. We can't guarantee, but this is our best option if we meet a threshold. And I guess the other question is, are we going to cut a one-time PO out of a certain fund? Or does the court want to approve where it comes from? Is the precinct going to cut their own? So, we can move that forward as well. How do we want to fund it?
I think it needs to come out of one fund so we can track it effectively. And I would just defer to Mr. Berry if he concurs, and then just determine that it comes out of the pick.
Okay. Hi, this is Dave. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
So, we can track it for potential FEMA reimbursement either way. And I do want to be clear that, the existing declaration, this would not be reimbursable. It could potentially become reimbursable. So, that's fine whether it comes out of precinct budgets or out of the pick. I think the question is, you know, whether the precincts feel they can absorb this cost within their existing budget, sort of as a contribution to response, or you want to allocate pick funding, right? And that's a court decision, but the funding, the FEMA reimbursement, the funding source, you know, we can disentangle those two questions.
Good deal.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would just suggest that it come from the pick.
Yeah, Commissioner Ellis?
I was just going to ask, where are we on the pick now, Mr. Berry? I mean, obviously, we Commissioners always prefer it come, I would generally prefer it not come from my budget, but if it's not going to be reimbursed, I just want to know where are we on the pick? I mentioned, we'll be last, you know, we're all going in the hurricane season. I believe in the science of climate change, so we had a record cold event, but we may have a record storm event again. But where are we on the pick?
Right. So, there's actually, we're going through it right now, because we're going through all the fiscal year '21 expenditures, seeing what actually got expended. But our best estimate right now is that we would be in around $130, $140 million range compared to a beginning of balance at the end of, in March of last year, of $260 million.
So, where were we again?
About $130, $140 million out of initial balance of $260.
Okay, so we were at $260, and now we're down to $130.
And we may get that difference reimbursed.
Yeah, or we may not get it.
But not soon, right? So, I mean, this is a relatively small item, but I do appreciate you asking, because I do think we're in a spot where there are lots of different demands on the pick in terms of COVID, hurricane season and Yuri. So, you know, it's a Commissioners Court call, but we do need to be judicious.
Commissioner Garcia, obviously, it's whatever the court decides, but if we ended up in a hole, we have to go looking at whatever bucket we could get through if the hurricanes hit us again. And that would mean going to our precincts, roll over us, everything else. And this is not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but it never is. You know, each time we've gone in to take some, hoping we get reimbursed, it's a good program, and I applaud you for leading on it. And, hey, it's whatever the court decides. I just want to make sure that, I'm raising an alarm about, thinking about, we were at $260. I just want to make sure that it's, I'm raising an alarm about thinking about, we were at $260, and now we're down to $130, and we hope we're going back. But what we saw with this winter storm, we better be prepared for another drastic weather event. And I don't know what it'll be. Just please tell me we're not going to have earthquakes next.
Right?
Don't say it, Commissioner.
Right. Please bite your tongue there, Commissioner. But I think for the time being, let's centralize it, let's take it out of the pick, and then we can go from there. And I think we can revisit depending on the precinct performances.
James, as far as the motion, so Commissioner Garcia already made the motion to one debris removal site to each precinct with a high utilization rate for M W B contractors that a cost not to exceed $325,000 and allocate $100,000 to each precinct to conduct debris pickup by request. Can we tack on and that the funding come out of the pick fund with, do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's the motion by Commissioner Garcia, correct, Commissioner?
Second. That's correct.
Second by Commissioner Ellis. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And this item remains for Monday, so to the extent that there are other discussions that we need to have on the storm, we can get to those on Monday. We've passed everything. A big thank you to all the county staff again for.
Judge, I'm glad you're going. It's important. That's what I was going to say earlier. It is not an inconvenience for any of us. We are glad the President of the United States, whoever that President may be, whatever party is here, and you ought to be there. And congratulations. I hope they realize what a big deal you are, like we do and Time Magazine does.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all so much. I look forward to seeing you all soon. And thank you to all of our employees for everything they've done over the past two weeks. So.
Do we recess or not?
Yeah, we recess. So this meeting of Commissioners' Court is now 10:32 a.m., and it is now in recess. We will continue on Monday, March 1st, 2021, at 1 p.m., 1 p.m.
Judge, I'll see you, I'll see you on Monday. Sorry to miss this afternoon. I just got the call a few hours ago. I'd already made arrangements. I wish I'd gotten it earlier, but I'll see you on Monday.
Okay.
Tom, I represent you.
Yeah.
Give me one of those buttons over. Or give me one of those Ramsey shirts.
Just so you know, Commissioner, we've all been, you know, they've changed the plan up on all of us. You know, we just learned this morning the final itinerary.
Okay.
So just so you know. All right. Thank you all so much. See y'all soon.
Thank you, Judge.